Can I have a motion to return from closed session?
Motion.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to ordinances and resolutions, we have consulted with our town attorney on our legal options for the issues in this portion of our agenda. And from the stance of our attorney, we have several options to consider. So these include taking no action, closing the street temporarily, or approving the resolution of intent as described on the agenda. So at this time, we will open the discussion up for the board.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to Ashley Woods Neighborhood for coming and for raising your concerns about this. I too have concerns, having lived in Ashley Woods for 20 years, about what happened to Brookview. I know the traffic there is already very dangerous for pedestrians, for the children, for pets, for everybody that's involved. And so I feel like in this situation, the developer has so many other avenues of egress and ingress that this would give us the ability to be able to close the road, whether we decide that's temporarily or permanently, depending on what our lawyer at this point thinks would be the wisest decision. But I do think that Ashley Woods has made their voices very clear as to what they want. And because this development was not part of Ashley Woods, was not approved by Elon, the town, but was approved by the town of Gibsonville, and that the majority of the people in this neighborhood did not have anything to do with it. I just don't feel like this is an avenue where we need to connect to a neighborhood, our connectivity to a neighborhood that's in a different town. I don't feel like the benefits outweigh the burdens of what will happen to Elon. I think we're going to get a lot of traffic, we're going to get a lot of road maintenance, we're getting a lot of safety issues. And back to just finishing up one thing that our police chief recommended to us a couple of months or a month ago, maybe two months ago, was the fact that one of the top concerns for our constituents and our residents in Elon was traffic and safety. And so those are two main things that our constituents who took the time to fill out that survey made very clear that those were things that they were concerned about. And so I think listening to them on this matter, if we have the judicial standing to be able to make it come to pass, I think that's where I stand on this issue.
Well, may I echo Stephanie Cinemas? I think this is a situation where two towns, a crossroads, so to speak. Obviously, we wanted to continue to be good neighbors. But we owe it to our citizens to honor the parameters and the expectations that they have. Whatever we decide to do tonight, I think it's going to set a precedent for other relationships we have with Gibsonville. Temporary closing that street for now allows us some opportunity to consider options. Not, it leads the developer, leads Gibsonville to thinking a decision has been made. I don't think that, I don't think we've come to that point yet. There's still a lot of legality that we haven't really looked at.
Yeah, I appreciate to kind of echo what Stephanie said. I'm appreciative of the input you guys have had and from the Ashley Woods neighborhood. It helps us a lot in seeing the support of this matter. I'm in favor of protecting you in the neighborhood. And as Monty said, we just have to look at all the options, legalities down the road. But I think our, I can speak for myself that I want to protect the Ashley Woods neighborhood. Sure, it's a safe place to live, to work. Have to go down the street, make sure that you're not any peril of extra traffic coming through that area with your pets, your children. So I totally understand your concerns and just let know that we, or I take it very seriously.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that moving toward the idea of the temporary closure gives us more options at this point. And it puts us into a, I feel, a position that allows the developer not only to decide what they want to do, but it also gives us a chance. And I think that there does be a need for some discussion. And there may be some future discussion. And there could be changes in ideas down the road. And a temporary closure just allows for that. And, but it keeps everybody safe in the meantime. And since there's no connecting road there, there won't be for a while, the temporary closure doesn't seem to me to be an offensive situation anyway. And since there was some assurances by the developer that they weren't going to use it for construction, I feel like that might be our best alternative. So that's where I think I'm going to be.
Yeah, so I appreciate everybody coming out three times now and speaking and letting us know, you know, when I started to become an alderman, it's not about me, it's about the people and hearing the people and what do they want? And so this isn't a new argument, right? You know, with other developments in Elon, when there's connectivity, everybody has issues with it happening. This is a unique one. And so I've tried to look at this, wrap my brain, I've talked to my fellow members, trying to figure out what is the best course of action for this. And it's unique in the sense that it's Gibsonville, right? It's a different developing neighborhood for me. And so when I look at it, I look at it as if the road is connected. We open up Aspen Avenue to have this connection. Is it going to benefit Gibsonville residents in any way? Maybe, but not really. They have four other ways in and out. Is it going to benefit Elon at all? Not really right now, right? If I'm looking at it, you know, there's one more exit for Ashley Woods folks instead of two. But hearing the concerns with the traffic that's going to come through, which also I looked up, this development, I think it's 130 homes. A North Carolina DOT, 130 homes does not constitute to have a traffic study done. So they don't see that it's needing to have that high volume of traffic. But we know with another entrance, there's going to be some, there's no arguing with that. I think every neighborhood in Elon has, can have neighbors come out and talk about how fast people speed up and down their streets. But then I still go back to it, this is Elon and then Gibsonville. And these taxpayers in Gibsonville are going to be riding on our streets. So I don't see it benefiting us with connectivity. It is in our ordinance to speak of connectivity and to encourage connectivity. I've always been a firm believer in the wider people open their arms, the better things get. The more inclusive we become, the more diverse we become, the stronger we become. But again, in this case, it's tough to, for me to make a decision and say, we're absolutely closing this road down right now. But I also know that keeping it open is not something that is the will of the people. Being an alderman, we're also responsible to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. We can't just frivolously spend people's money, not just Ashley Woods people's money, but everybody in Elon's money. And so weighing the option of potential litigation and how much is this going to cost us as a town? How much time is this going to cost us for our staff who is short-staffed, right? We have a temporary planning director right now. Right now, it's, you know, we got Rich wearing a bunch of hats. And so is it going to exhaust us in different manners? So right now, I'm leaning to the temporary closure, which from my understanding, we can kind of like what we did on College Avenue, right beside Pandora's. And we temporary closed that section, but there's not a time limit on when we have to open it. So if that's an option, what we're looking at, that is where I would, I would like to move towards. So I make a motion to temporary close Aspen Avenue. Based on Article 15, 16A, 296, sub A4, which says the power to close any street or alley either permanently or temporarily, which is granted to us as a town. So based off of this, I'll make a motion to temporary close Aspen Avenue.
Can I be more specific though? Because we don't want to close all of Aspen Avenue, but we want to close the northern.
So you would like to amend?
I just want to amend it just to say that it would, that that northern terminus would be the, would be where we would close that. I just wanted to be real specific.
Can you re- repeat the amended motion, please?
I wrote, I wrote a few notes down and I just moved to temporarily close Aspen Avenue at its northerly terminus in Elon. And that's in accordance with the general statute that we talked about, 168, 296, subsections A4.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So with the passing of that, you will go ahead and adjourning the special meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Just so everyone knows, we're going to take a five-minute recess. There will be a public comment section in our regular meeting that will start in five minutes. And up our regular meeting of the Town of Elon Board of Aldermen, April 12, 2022. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone who's a member of the state stands.
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so we are going to ask everyone, as Rich said, to please stay seated, no sudden movements as we bring in our very special guest. So, yep, we're ready.
That's a sad dog out there, Mark.
Well, you know, once you get to retirement, you just.
Retire.
Thank you.
It's always a special time when a valued employee retires. In this case, we're here to celebrate Spartacus's retirement. Spartacus is a five-year-old Dutch shepherd who's been with the Corps since 2018. Capt by his handler, Dietrich, who's our new K-9 officer at the time. Out of the litter, in available pups, this is the one that she picked, or probably he picked her, and bonded right away. Spartacus has been a faithful.
You don't want to touch me.
Faithful, loyal animal, the great protector of the town, town's residents, and particularly his derango. And if any of you have the pleasure of walking past his derango when he was there, he would let you know. Spartacus went on 130 calls at this time with us. And that was not just in Elon, that was throughout Alamance County. The K-9 Corps, they work everywhere, they're 24-hour on-call. And whenever a town needs them, they respond. So wherever we were called, Dietrich and Spartacus showed up to take care of business. So that was Spartacus, a high-energy dog. Truly a member of the Elon Police Department team. Let's see, love playing with his toys and. But when he's done playing with his toys, knew his officers and would love to come into the police department, get his pets from them. I mean, perhaps not bugs, but certainly people would be allowed to pet him. So anyway, Spartacus is a great member of that team. You're certainly going to miss the energy that he's brought to this presentation. So we have a plaque to commemorate Spartacus's time with us, 2018 to 2022. Appreciation to Spartacus for years of service and dedication to Elon Police Department, Town of Elon, and all the residents of Alamance County. 130 deployments and high energy all the time. I've been warned that although I like to hug and I know Dietrich likes hugs, we're going to leave it at this.
Thank you, guys.
You want this or you want to come back for it?
I got it. All right, let's throw it.
She need that for the other case she's going to do.
This was more protection for me.
Smart.
I was told, don't hand this to Dietrich. Spartacus may bite you. So that kind of training takes a long time to get out of, so I respect it.
Sorry, I was still waiting on you.
Ready?
So next on our item is, or on our agenda is Item B, Promotion Recognition Introduction. And T4D.
All right. Go with. I want to introduce you guys who may not know Stephen Griesen. I don't need this. I remember Stephen coming in and sitting in my office several years back and having a very candid conversation about his interest in coming to Elon. He came to us from way of Gibsonville. He too was a K-9 handler for those folks and had a lot of high energy. You know, he wanted to come over. He worked, I think, Dietrich, Sergeant Graves at the time, Lieutenant King, spoke very highly of Stephen. He's been here for a short amount of time, but he has really ran up the ranks. He has a very driven personality. Again, I say high energy, but that is honestly the truth. Since he's been with us, he's become a general instructor, a TASER instructor. He operates as an operator with our SRT team. We have, we are on the Alamance County Sheriff's Office SRT team. He's an operator on that team. He has his intermediate certificate. And we've also hand-chosen him to help with our firearms program. He hasn't got to go for the pre-qualification. There's a lot of things that go into that. He's got 600 hours of, over 600 hours of continuing education. And he's a Wolfpack, graduated from state. I hear some applause in the back. But he's been with us since 2019. So this is a, this is a huge accomplishment for such a short period of time. He participated in our most recent sergeant assessments. And to be quite honest, his competition was fierce. We had a lot of veterans in that pool. And he, I tell you, he brought it and he held his own. The only thing he lacked was just some experience, some time in the chair to learn how to navigate certain issues. Since that time, however, he's been operating as an acting sergeant in the absence of, who you just met, who Sergeant Graves, when she had a platoon here. So for the last two months, he's been doing a fantastic job as a sergeant in an acting sense. And now we're wanting to make it official. We're so proud that he chose Elon to come to. And we hope that, you know, we're looking at the next class of assistant chiefs, chiefs. Both the guys that are here today absolutely have that potential. So again, I just wanted to recognize Sergeant Stephen Griesen. I'll give it to you later. But I also have, wasn't prepared because of the dog. These are his insignia for his collar. You're welcome. Yes, sir. I think quite a few of you know Demario Chavis. If you don't, you're really missing out. Demario too participated in our last lieutenant's assessment. And it was a really, it was a really close, close call. And I think at this point, he's been in this role since March 21st. I'm thinking at this point, he wished he would have not taken it. Demario comes to us, he's been, he's been with Elon for quite a while. He came to us from Burlington. He was an operator on Burlington's SRT team. He came over and stepped into that role with us. He has spent four years, I think, right, at AUNET? Yep, so he came over, he spent a couple of years on patrol, got his bearings, and he was assigned to the Alamance Narcotics Enforcement Team. He spent a lot of time working high, high-level drug investigations. They did a lot of stuff to hit media and, and we got a lot of asset forfeiture through that. So we missed him over there, but leadership called him here. It called him back to patrol. He was promoted in October of last year. So, or no, of 2020, so just over two years, he's been a sergeant. When I, when I tell you that Demario probably wishes he hadn't taken this promotion, he is now going to be our administrative lieutenant. And what that entails, just a few little nuggets. And it's kind of a catch-up or whatever else, I can't figure out who it goes to, right? He supervises CID, he's also taken an on-call position with that. He will oversee evidence, our COP program, which is our community-oriented policing. And there's probably no better person here to keep that fuel fire, or fuel that fire and keep us going. Every ounce of equipment, just about that we buy, it goes through his hands. He purchases that, or he oversees the purchasing of it. Our vehicle maintenance, our vehicle purchasing, parking enforcement, who gets more complaints than any officer I've ever met. Special events, and he's also our liaison with North Carolina Training and Standards. So anytime we hire, he has to make sure that paperwork is perfect. Absolutely perfect or it gets sent back. And again, among many, many other things, he's got 18 years' experience. Started out in Henderson, worked for North Carolina Department of Revenue, Burlington, and came here in 2015. Lieutenant Chavis is very accomplished. We are very proud that he stuck it out with us. And he taught us a thing or two as well. So without further ado, Lieutenant Chavis.
I think I would have been more afraid of her than.
Yay, next.
All right, moving ahead to the next item on our agenda. And this is our public comment section. So as always, we welcome public comments from our residents and visitors. This is for the public to speak on any non-agenda item. And you have up to three minutes. Please stand, speak your name, and share your address as well. And we will start here in the room. And we will start here in the room. Come up to the podium, or you can just stand right there, whichever you prefer.
Name is Panos, last name. I appreciate your help. That just passed. But. Different duration from last time, since at least I never found out what's really driving this conflict. And what's at stake? And are we fighting the developer or the Gibsonville? The. I have a general. The developer has found the other avenues into his development area. Efficient. And he has some reason, not long, to prefer the Aspen. And that's fine, probably justified. But. As we consider past the temporary closure and reopening that avenue. 130, in that development. We make the same assessment. And if they're. The developers, we reach the same conclusion that the other avenue is out. Appropriate for them and that Aspen is much more favorable. I don't see what will stop them from doing that except exactly where they are in the development itself and. Their own and so on. But it will happen. And that's when the real traffic will get. So although the scary vehicles of the developer are not going to be the ones going out of Aspen, there'll be many more vehicles at all times of day and night. So what I would like to say is, if we can, please consider this when you have the chance to consider reversing the temporary closure. It's a favorable way. It's there and others. We'll see the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To come next, the podium's worst.
I'm just standing right here, Stephen Vaughn. This may have been addressed at some time before I was got involved with this. But, and I'm not sure that this even impacts it or not. But the other end of Aspen has been closed for a number of years. The same thing for Arbor. And these, we were told many years ago, when we only had one entrance exit to the subdivision, that those were going to be future entrances, you know, exits for us. So of course, Twin Lakes came into the picture. All of that may be Burlington. I'm not really sure. And I don't know of the politics or logistics of how those decisions were made. But, you know, they were closed and there went our access to, to get out of the subdivision, you know, emergently should we need to. Anyway, so I don't, I don't know if those. It's a tidbits of information help anyway, but, you know, in that situation, they were permanently closed. So thank you.
And Mr. Vaughn, what's your address?
107 Avenue Treats.
Just have one quick question. My name is Michael Richardson. I live at 1016 Brookview Drive. Four houses away from Aspen and where the majority of this traffic is likely to go. Because when I bought our house many years ago, you know, Brookview was dead-end drive. And we had like virtually no traffic. And now I feel like I live on a highway already without, you know, this new development. But I am curious. So you guys voted tonight to temporarily close the, the end of Aspen. So what, what does that mean? Like what kind of, what, what would then trigger it to either be opened or to be permanently closed? Like what, what would need to happen for one of those two things to occur?
So our attorney shared with us that we didn't have to put any timeframe on the temporary closure. And if we do desire to take permanent measures, there are other actions that would need to be taken. We have asked our attorney to do some additional research on our behalf and come back to us at our next meeting. So we, at least I believe, since we voted on that as a board, that the goal is for us to have a resolution tonight, at least to get us to that versus delaying any decision. Anyone on the phone? Or on Zoom? What did you say? Sorry?
No, there's no one.
Last chance. Hey, we will close the public comment section. Thank you all so much. Of course, you are welcome to stay and we'd love to have you, but if you wish to leave, you are more than welcome. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Education and Sharing Day. Rich, can you just share, in the agenda, it actually says that we have to vote on this, but I don't believe that we do vote on our proclamation.
I don't think it's necessarily there to be voted on. It was more. Public, to make the announcement that you had issued the proclamation on education and sharing. Believe we did last year as well.
And is Rabbi Mindy on the line by chance? All right, well, just a little bit of background, the Education and Sharing Day is a really important event each year. This has been signed by presidents and governors, presidents of our country, governors from across the country, just in support of education throughout our nation. There, there is a historical significance among the Jewish community, but it's really about education for all. And if anyone would like to read that, they of course are welcome to do so on our town's website.
Will we put it there? Yes.
Any, any questions, comments from the board? All right, moving along to ordinances and resolutions. Letter A, rezoning request, RZ number 2022-01, submitted by Elon Self Storage LLC. Who's presenting that to me?
Mary Catherine.
I don't have much presentations, but there's, what we talked about, Chris Jones is just rezoning his property off of the highway on Off Ranch. And he requested to rezone it from commercial to industrial. And he plans to expand it, not change the use, but so that his use now will become conforming. Because right now it's not conforming. And so he just wants to be able to have his property and his use be good.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept that rezoning to industrial.
A second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. That motion carries unanimously.
And there's also a statement of consistency, which I think you're supposed to read out loud. Not that.
There's so much out here.
It is.
Okay, I'm reading the entire thing. Okay. So the statement of consistency reads, whereas an amendment to the official land development ordinance map Town of Elon, North Carolina, as required by Chapter 8 of the Town of Elon Land Development Ordinance has been proposed, which amendment is identified and described as follows. Rezoning RZ number 2022-01-Elon Self Storage LLC, more specifically to apply the planning district designation of industrial I to a parcel identified by parcel number 108968. It gives the, the pin there as well. Now therefore, the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Elon resolves as follows. And I have to read all this, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I've never had to do this before. So this is. All right, section one, the Board of Aldermen concludes that the above-described amendment is consistent with the Town of Elon Land Use Plan based on the following provisions included in the plan. The future land use and conservation map included in the plan indicates employment uses for the property. While storage facilities do not generate high employment numbers, the plan's description of employment uses include the accommodation of light industrial uses such as storage uses. Number two, plan goals and objectives. Promote and ensure quality governance, stewardship of public resources, and sustainability of services. Letter B, ensure adequate plans are in place to support existing and future development. I think there's a typo on this. So it says section 1122. Should that be section three? Key recommendations, should that be number three? Key recommendations. Letter A, ED-1.1, focus on retention of existing industry and employment centers. Letter B, IS-3, manage growth to utilize existing infrastructure capacity and discourage growth in conservation areas. Section two, the Board of Aldermen concludes that the above-described amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because of expand, because any expansion of the use will be conditioned through a special use permit process requiring approval by the town's elected body because the proposed use serves an established need for the community and because the use, even if expanded, has the potential to have fewer negative impacts such as traffic and noise to the area when compared with uses allowed under the current commercial zoning. Do I have a motion to approve? Second, all in favor, say aye. Oh, wow.
You did a fine job there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, letter B, lead abatement grant resolution.
Okay, again, this is a, it's a titled resolution by governing body. It's a, it's a kind of a catch-all resolution that we need to adopt and submit to the state in order to be eligible for grant funds. Case for lead testing. We will use the funds for better, more complete analysis of our system to identify where we have lead issues, complete mapping of the system. Help develop some of those remediation plans to address areas where we do have lead. I will say our ongoing testing program turns up negligible issues, but it still needs to stay on top of it. And as we can replace those old lead fittings, lead solder actually, to remove those risks. So this opens, this makes us eligible for grant funding by doing this.
Any questions for Rich? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm the mayor, since you don't have to read it, I'm going to go ahead and move that we.
Thank you. One second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Letter C, resolution of support for proposed improvements to South Williamson Avenue.
Okay. You recall back in 2020, we were. We became aware that Burlington had applied for state funding to rebuild South Williamson from St. Mark's, all the way through St. Mark's Church and through Elon up to Lebanon. Two lanes each way, center median strip. Major impact certainly in our community. And in discussing that and talking to the MPO, there were other options available. We presented the various options that were out there. And this board, as I recall, was, was option number two that you selected, which calls for bike lanes, sidewalks, with center turn lanes where they are needed, not a center turn lane all the way through. So within the existing right-of-way, most of the work can be done. Where we have to put in one of those center turn lanes at intersections, it would widen out, and I think it was from 60 to 70, 60, 60 feet. Okay. So minimal increase of right-of-way width as opposed to some which took it up to 110 feet wide, which would, you know, eliminated the fire station, would have had an impact on Town Hall and most, a lot of the homes up and down South Williamson. At the time, you voted and selected that option. We provided the correspondence to the state. And as Pam was winding down, realized that we probably should have done a resolution to codify that decision. She prepared this item and the draft resolution of support for option two being the more standard road cross, cross-section that we're familiar with. So with a vote of that, we would provide that resolution to the state and stake our claim that this is what we think should happen to Elon.
In what year did we make that decision? Was it 2019?
2020.
In 2020? Oh, it feels like much longer.
I just want to make one correction. It does go up to 80 foot, just for those.
So it'll flare out, then come back in.
Any questions for Rich on this item? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
It's great, but we'll see if it happens in my lifetime.
Well, the downside is there's still plans in the near future to do anything. Stay because of funding, so stay tuned. It's all about that priority order.
There's a whole lot of infrastructure money out there. All right, that carried unanimously. New business, letter A, 2022 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Program.
We applied to the Department of Regional Quality for a grant. We have received an offer of $6,500, which would mean our match would be $1,200. It is $400 less than what we asked for. They just apparently had a lot of applicants this year and they were not willing to cover the printer convenience fees and the printing taxes. So. We would like to ask the board to accept the $6,500 grant money so that it can be used. These, the grant monies will be used to print educational materials on recycling, pamphlets in tri-fold. Triple pamphlets to go into the newsletter and magnets to be given and can tags to be deployed and used by public works so that when someone's recycling, it doesn't get picked up. And they call and complain about it, that the can tag can go and be put on and it can say, this is why recycling wasn't picked up. It was contaminated by things that can't be recycled. In the future, this is the correct way to. And Murphy is currently talking to GFL, who we have the new contract with to set the systems where we're notified when cans aren't picked up. So that's also how the tax will be used.
Is it a generic trap hold or is it something you're going to design to send out to everybody?
So it'll be, one of the parts is that we're going to design it with DEQ so that it can save their own design team. And so, because we have triple pamphlets and inserts that we gave out from a couple of years ago. But I think we're going to have a new design based on the things.
Since there was less money allocated, is the match that we're bringing, is that going to be enough to cover what you need to do? Or should we, is there a way of allocating more money or is it just going to be covered in the budget? Whatever shortfall is going to be discovered as a budget that we have.
We would cover that through operating costs.
Through operating.
Our budget.
We don't have to do anything different. We don't have to do anything different, okay?
Um, mayor, I have one question and maybe Dr. Stein can answer that. Is our recycling tied to universities or they want a separate uh contract? Is there a recycling? Obviously promote with the education. Curious about what what they do, what they do now, it doesn't, even if it doesn't affect us. I mean, that's a big population that can recycle, there is recycling. I just wondered what they're doing.
They're they're not part of our recycling contract with our vendor. I don't know who you use for your recycling collection. I I in my experience in in recycling in the past has been that the market is pretty much the market so that, you know, one town is not gonna be significantly different from another town. We'll have access to the same markets. There are certain things that the university does, like they they have a composting program that is limited in size. So they come in on they they don't have to secure certain DEQ permits. If we were to join with them, that would increase the size, whole different level of permitting. Takes it, you know, from what they're doing, kind of small scale, if you will, it turns into a major effort. So we have talked about some joint efforts like that that can't work. But we're all in the, I think, all the same market for cans and bottles and paper, that kind of.
And my point wasn't necessarily to aggregate our our recycling, but to collaborate education wise, because obviously there's folks that come from all around around the world. Experience with recycling are much different than what we have and it's, I'm sure it's a challenge that they have is try to make sure people keep this recyclable, recyclable, the trash, trash, and they do a good job of having composts around campus. You know, I don't know, we could, we could entertain something such as that. It would be interesting to learn what other communities and even universities do to try to promote.
So I touch base with, I assume that would go to Tom Flood or or Brad. Probably to find out how they're how they operate their recycling program and where we can share resources, certainly we would do, we'd try to do that.
Rich, I think Tom Flood and then maybe the sustainability office. Works closely with them, but they might be able to provide.
Okay. Okay. The opportunity to collaborate.
This might also be a great place for our new sustainability committee.
They get roll, absolutely, yeah. The other thing that that I kind of did mention is this grant takes effect July one. Where our new contracts will take effect on collection, so we will be working with hand in glove with uh presumably GFL on on that whole transition and and getting the education out to folks. I think they've got their own education plan that that would go out with their, uh, as you remember the last, they were talking about the, you know, the plastic bags with all their information in it. That'll have recycling information, we could follow up with different different types of information or deliver it in a different way, magnets versus what comes in their plastic bag, all reinforcing that. The rules and what needs to happen, what could go in there, what can't. So we'll see a lot of that happening this summer with the transition and implementing this grant.
Interesting. They on the news, they had the guy from NBC, uh, and he was talking about just what we're talking about here, recycling. What you can put in, what you can't, he said, you know, he was surprised at everything, we come with pizza boxes and just that was interesting and why did this?
Well, and and what's interesting is that the pizza box are corrugated cardboard. And you're getting them from pizza place before they put the pizza in them, recycle them all day long. Once the pizza goes in them, they become greasy, you know, they get cheese stuck in it, pepper, whatever. That's all contaminated and in in the recycling business, it used to be and we know we're gonna have five, six percent contaminants in there, but that's okay. And they've ratcheted down or ratcheted down, ratcheted down. The way it feels add, you know, one or two pizza boxes per bale and contaminate the whole bale and get rejected. So it really is important for people. I tear the lids off my pizza boxes because the lids don't have the grease on them, the bottoms do. You know, extra effort, but that's the kind of thing that you you need to really think about it each time you're getting ready to throw something in the recycling bin. So.
Makes you feel good, but they're still gonna throw it away.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna rip my lid off, thank you, yes.
Just re- here's a mnemonic to remember, when you're having that pizza and say, if I throw this away, Rich is gonna flip his lid.
You're gonna tear my lid.
Take your pizza box back and give him.
You know, it's.
Thanks for getting that grant.
Yes, I really like the idea of the magnets specifically because the town newsletter, I read it one time, right, and then it goes in my recycle bin.
Oh, I was about to get you.
I was an environmental science teacher, who do you think I am? Um, so, you know, so what I like about the magnet is that it can go up, it can stay forever. I mean, I have magnets that, gosh, we've had forever, right? And versus reading it once and just tossing it, so I don't know how much flexibility you have and what you spend on what in what you proposed, but just something to consider that the magnet's probably going to have a more lasting impact. There might also be opportunities for us to save on printing if we were to maybe partner with Elon University and pay them their rate because they have a print shop. That's, you know, that's an option too, maybe. Do I have a motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next item is solid waste and recycling bin awards. I know we had quite a lengthy presentation on this. Among other things. A month ago, two weeks ago.
We met every week since, so.
Just a quick summary on that?
Sure, um. January, maybe we would, both of our contracts for solid waste and recycling are up at the end of the month, uh, end of June. Uh, I think it was back in January, we released requests for proposals from vendors. We reached out to quite a few, uh, as many as we could find, researched others that didn't do residential collection. We received proposals from Republic who has our current solid waste contract and GFL who has our current recycling contract. Because of the way they they were, they were pitched back to us. We ended up looking them as as lumped contracts, so rather than separating them, we looked at this one contract to cover both. GFL came in a little bit less expensive than Republic, I think the difference was about five hundred dollars. And our experience with GFL over the last several years is has been really good. Our experience with Republic, they've they've been having some issues with the equipment, missed routes and stuff like that, so the recommendation of staff was that the uh it'd be awarded to GFL. Second, I'll tell you what the numbers look like. Currently, uh, we have a a total cost of uh thirteen dollars uh for both combined on a on a monthly basis. I think right now our our solid waste is eleven eighty-two a month. And our recycling is a dollar twenty-three a month. Under the proposed uh bid to GFL, our solid waste cost will actually go down to ten twenty-nine. Our recycling costs will increase about five hundred percent up to six twenty-four, so that the total per bid cost per month is be about sixteen fifty-three. So it's a significant increase in overall cost and uh makes it, it's their 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 proposal a bit less than Republic's and when we get into the budget later this month, we'll talk about some of the avenues that we can look at to to make that more palatable. Financially anyway. So anyway, that's that's the summary of the two proposals and if there's any other questions, I think David Murphy is on the line, if you have any technical questions, he can chime in. And.
And how long is the contract for?
It is five-year contract, has a couple of extensions on it.
Five years, it's two, one year extended.
Smart, two, two years.
It's a five-year contract with two, two years.
And the extensions are at the same rate or?
I will, they'll go up every July according to the CPI. I mean, that's just a annual rate. Figure by, I forget exactly what the abbreviation is, but it's an index, well, which is the same way our current contracts work.
So it goes up every year?
Based on inflation, yes.
If inflation's twelve percent a year.
I'd make a suggestion, since we have, and I'm sure everybody's thought of this, but have so much going on with trash and recycling all at the same time between, you know, the contracts changing, the bins are gonna be changing. What you're allowed to put in or at least clarifying what you're allowed to put in, so I understand the grant is starting about the exact same time, is there any way that we would have any funding to get kind of in front of this in an informational way? Just because I I wouldn't think we want to have the information going out at the same time, so if there's a way that we could do it a month in advance or something like that to be able to facilitate letting folks know that the charge is gonna go up, you know, three dollars and fifty-three cents and then what they need to put in the recycling bin or anything like that that we can do to help facilitate that because I don't want you guys to get inundated when all this, these changes are made at the same time.
We've pushed the May first newsletter. That's our next scheduled newsletter, it's May first. Push that deadline until tomorrow so we can say who the who the vendor's gonna be. Certainly have the capacity to do a June first newsletter. Which would we'd have to be pretty quick on it to put it together to say, all right. If going with presumably GFL, so that's where the vote goes. They talked about how how they would do the transition, so we want to explain that. So yes, we have, we have looked at the, I at least I've been thinking about the idea of a June newsletter dedicated to generally solid waste. I'll be a little bit on there on other utilities. The first newsletter does have most increase in utility rates. Does have, I believe we included the explanation that solid waste rates for us were going up. I don't think I've talked about the idea of changing the solid waste rate because that's something you folks have talked about. Sure, where you have talked about the utility rates. But we get into budget, that's gonna be one of the things that we need to talk about is it's been since I think two thousand nineteen, since we've been at nine dollars a barrel, which even in that didn't cover the the per barrel costs. So um that might be the easiest avenue for us is to do a quick newsletter for June first as well. And hit those high points so that people are aware of it. Some education, learn what's gonna happen and that they need to put the bins out, when they need to, you know, put the old bins out so they get picked up by Republic, what have you.
I think you remember her here saying that our schedule is gonna stay the same. Might change it, but when it starts, we're still just gonna be on the same track and I'm assuming this switching it. Be us, our responsibility to educate the residents or is GFL gonna help educate the switching? Or do we just not, I mean, I know it's gonna happen. Um, but how does it work?
It'll, it'll be a collaboration between the two of us.
Thank you, David.
It will, it'll be a collaboration.
Door knocking on everybody.
That's right.
I hope not, but we have once, once the vote goes through, you know, a sum and it is them, then we'll be in contact with Norma and Seth and everybody over there to find out, you know, exactly their plans. Right now, it appears that it's gonna be the same days. So I think the biggest issue is just gonna be making sure that everybody, whether they have whether they actually have solid waste in their can or not, gets it to the street. And then it it should be a simple swap out. Uh, one truck come through and empty the trash and another truck pick it up.
We'll be working with both Republic and GFL over the next two months to to figure out that plan, all right? On this date, everyone put your Republic bids out. On this date, everyone's gonna get their GFL bins. On this date, uh, put your public bids out, uh, with nothing in it and Republic will pick them up. So we'll we'll get, we'll do that swap out there and, uh, you know, there'll be some ongoing education. Even if we, you know, I I don't want to wait till the July first newsletter to put it all out there.
It sounds like we don't have an an option like this, we gotta do this. So I'll make a motion to.
I did have a question, I I was reading through this, I apologize, I'm blank stepping, there's so much going on. But it it states here, this, there's, the the it will require cost of living um evaluation each July, right? Is it, was that typically what we did in the past where each year we basically negotiated or they said we're gonna increase it based on the cost of living, which in this case is based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Water, Sewer, Trash Index, Garbage and Trash, you knew, Trash something next, so I'm not familiar with that index, but is that typically what?
That's what David just said, that that's what we have currently.
Yeah, I I think that's how.
Yes, so that's correct, that's correct, that's how it works now and that does, that that won't change and that's that's gonna be the same no matter which company you go with.
All right.
Another question I had too, obviously with the fee that we charge these citizens shows up in the water bill. Is that based on the number of receptacles that we provide them or is there additional charge?
It's per stop, right?
The 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 fee that the town is charged is on a per stop fee, so two cans or three cans is just better. Um, rest, I I think on, go ahead, David.
I apologize, Rich. Um. A solid waste fee is based on one can each, one recycling bin. One trash bin per customer. What will change is in the past, we owned the recycling bins. And so residents would buy a recycling bin for a one-time fee. A trash bin, however, they get charged a whole extra nine dollars currently um to pick that up. Now, that'll transfer into being the same thing for recycling, it will no longer be a one-time fee, it'll be added to to their solid waste fees so that the town doesn't eat the cost of of that. Um, I mean, if you want extra stuff, then great, you might have to pay for it.
And how do we monitor that? I mean, if somebody has two cans, you know, because one thing I did hear from some student rentals was that someone moved from one house and they took the additional trash can to another house, so how do we monitor when they pick up two cans versus one or three cans versus one at a given address?
The rice recycling bins are, well, in the past have been kept logged here at Public Works. The trash bins have been going through the water bill. So Deborah could look back at the water bill and say, yeah, they've been charged for three cans. Um. Now it'll be the same with both because both will be added to the water bill. So that actually make it easier to monitor because we have run into that where they said, hey, when we left, we had three cans, now we ain't got but one. Uh, and this, you know.
I think the question more moreover, David, would be like my neighbor sold her house and she's she's moving. I'd see an empty trash can over there, so I take it to my house and I start putting two out in front of my house. How are we gonna know to start charging me an extra nine dollars?
Wait, let me take a stab at that.
All right.
Because whoever moves into your neighbor's house is gonna be charged for two. And they're gonna come to us and say, I've only got one. And and the. And, and the final analysis, they're all typically coded, you know, that's a serial number on it. We know who's got one, we know who has two. We go out, all right, you're supposed to have two, you've only got one. Hmm. Check the numbers over on Quinn's house.
But who? Okay, I mean, I'm thinking too hard about it.
I mean.
But is Republic calling you? I'm going to be like, hey, I'm picking up two at this house, and I haven't never done that before.
Um.
They're not, they're not currently doing that. Currently, what happens is, as Emily, I think, was referring to, people say, hey, they had two, or I had two, or or however it works. And then the investigation begins, and you figure it out. Going forward. Going forward, GFL will be, they'll keep up with that. I mean, if they, if they haven't picked up three cans at your house, they're going to say, hey, sorry, I don't remember exactly the number, but one, two, three. Westgate, you know.
You got the bird right, David. I like it.
Okay. Well, and everybody is going to be getting new trash cans, but not new recycle cans, is that correct?
Until their recycling can has to be replaced, or if they want an extra one.
Okay.
Then they'll get one directly from GFL.
And so GFL will have a record at that point if someone needs more than one.
And they will have our records of where they are today, because those, again, we've got a record of all the recycling bins that we've distributed. So it's, I mean, it's a little bit detective, detective work if, you know, somebody, you know, collecting cans and putting them out. At some point, someone's going to want to know why they're being billed for stuff they don't have. That, again, the else, that'll, that'll trigger us to look into and try and figure it out.
Well, we do have a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a motion?
I made a, I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to old business letter, a charter amendment, change style of governing board to town council. So I believe that the proposal by the staff, based off of our previous discussions, was that we are on our agenda tonight is a discussion around holding a public hearing on the twenty-fifth of April. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any discussion? Can we give some more background? You want to provide more background?
Um, sure, for anybody who's watching. The, the board is, the board has discussed this, the idea of switching from alderman to council. And I think the sense was that alderman is a, is a bit of an archaic term that not widely understood. So everybody knows who what a counselor is, what a counselor does, not sure what older people do. So the sentiment was, we're going to amend our charter, change our form of government, if you will, from Board of Aldermen manager to council manager. Authorities are the same, the responsibilities are the same, and the restrictions are the same. So change operationally what you do, just changes how you introduce yourself to everybody and what you're known as.
Do not add that in the public hearing notice and the ordinance itself. It's, it has to be stated specifically what you call yourself. I keep hearing me say that. So we know it's town council, but it's an individual. Are you choosing to be called councilperson, councilor? As a member, those, that is what I need defined, so that I can make that note in that one and the public hearing.
Is, is that actually part of the public hearing notice?
Yeah, well, the actual document resolution, document, whatever you want to call it, has to be written in that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do have council member in the draft resolution.
Councilman. Counselor is also.
I also always called myself as member of the board. I never said older woman. Because that translates to elder woman or older woman, which I am not, for the record.
She's older.
Older than my daughters.
So, I mean. Any, any discussion on council member? You can, of course, call yourself councilman, councilwoman.
Counselor.
Counselor.
My preference.
Officially, council member or counselor?
Council member. Sorry, in there.
I'm just thinking, just like Congress, what do you call your congressperson? Congressman, congressperson, Congress, member of Congress. How do they introduce themselves? Senator, you call a senator.
Yeah.
And I think Congress fits itself more to, Congress is a, a, a neutral term. So adding congressman, congresswoman is an easy thing to do, as opposed to alderman, which is fine. So counselor, council, in what, counselor, you can introduce yourself as councilwoman, councilman. The term member can have a lot of different connotations. Member means a club, you're elected official, or you're a member, or you're and that's why, you know, go back to what you said, a counselor, I don't consider myself a counselor, but in some respect, that's probably more appropriate than a member.
So do you say that you're a member of the Board of Aldermen?
Yeah, I'm on the board.
You're on the board, you know, Sarah.
Which is going to be used again, or is it for ordinances in our, like, anything when you're single, or when you're singling out one of us making a decision?
So like, Stephanie says I'm typing minutes, and I'll say alderman, Mark, no, not Mark. We have, alderman Quinn Ray. So now I would type, I guess, councilmember Quinn Ray.
Or councilor.
Or councilor.
What does the Rowntons Council call themselves? City Council. What are the municipalities that have a council?
What I hear about as councilmember.
You're all members of the council. And I'm not opposed to, I'm just having a discussion, just talking about it.
Yeah. Probably end up using all the terms, but for the purpose you're talking about, if that seems grammatically feels okay grammatically, then maybe we should stay with, stick with councilmember. But if we're charging by the, by the, by the.
Word of letter.
Counselor is much, much cheaper.
I think we're charged by the page, so we're safe.
Unless all those councilmembers take you on a second page.
I mean, I think, Rich, that if we go with councilmember, I think we can agree that if you wish to call us counselor.
Probably will, just because I'm stubborn.
That's okay, me too.
I like it.
Call along.
Any other discussion on this item? Do.
When does it take effect?
This is all.
The public hearing is on the twenty-fifth.
And then the part of your next meeting is the ordinance, where you will adopt the ordinance, and then it will be effective immediately.
Next meeting?
I was looking on there, it looked like we had to have two hearings.
Following the public hearing? All you have to have is a, your, the ordinance at your following meeting, your next following meeting, is the way it's worded.
And it says, yes, it says, option one was to conduct public hearing on April twenty-fifth and on May tenth.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
Okay, she was saying the same thing. Okay, I just missed her. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this charter amendment? No, it doesn't say that. It says charter.
As a future member of the council, I will make the motion to accept this resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to reports, town manager, you now have three minutes to address the board.
I am, I am thrilled to be able to introduce you, introduce to all of you tonight, Jill Weston, who is our new downtown administrative coordinator director.
And Jill is an Elon resident.
Elon resident.
Avid downtowner.
Avid downtowner. She's experienced in the profession. She's been the downtown director in Reesville for the last couple of years. She has owned and run at least two businesses of her own, twelve years each, so she has a good affinity for what small business owners are dealing with, how they operate, how they think. So I think she'll bring a lot of intuitive knowledge to dealing with our downtown folks, and certainly brings the, the professional experience of downtown director to Elon, and we're looking forward to some, we've already talked over a bunch of ideas, and so we're looking forward to some, some new activity and new horizons that we'll be achieving. So I'm thrilled that she started this past week, and want to make sure that you all folks had a chance to meet her.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm sorry you had to be here for so long to get an introduction. That's it?
You want to add three minutes, I'm done.
All right, moving on, we're going to start with Stephanie tonight.
I, I'm just thank you to the staff, and thank you to the members for being so diligent in the Aspen Avenue issue. I know it's taken up a lot of time, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Thank you.
Hey, Jill, it's nice to see you. Yeah, I thought I recognized your name, and then it was like, wow, it's Jill. So Jill and I have a relationship coming back to the, the root and tangent, and seeing her constantly come in there. She really helped support the downtown businesses during the pandemic, so I'm thrilled to have you here helping us, because I know how much you do care about our downtown businesses. Email from Rich. So he, we have an arts advisory committee, hasn't really done much, clean left. And I got back into it, Rich sent an email to Donnie, trying to figure out what is our crosswalk, what makes a crosswalk, what can we do? I mean, it's really just two lines. So we're really going to paint a crosswalk. I think the first we're going to do, though, might be over there at a perks, going across whole, small one, but we can put some color. We don't, it's not going to impact too much of shutting down a road, because originally we had the Trolinger in Lebanon shutting down these roads. So it'll just be nice to get some color and working with Jill to try to do some revampment of, or modernizing, or artistically creative stuff in, in our downtown. I appreciate everybody's diligence with this Aspen Avenue. For me personally, it was, I feel like one of the toughest decisions, and we haven't even finished the decisions. But, uh, you know, even during the meeting, I got texts from people from Ashley Woods about I need to be doing. So, uh, yeah, I don't encourage it. It makes me mad. But that's it. I appreciate everybody. And I'm not looking forward to Easter, or I am looking forward to Easter, and we have a live after five, or.
Not this Friday. It was Good Friday.
I said it would be an even better Friday if it was music. All right, Randy?
Just want to say that as we come into the, to the spring season, the places, the town is looking very pretty. There's a lot of nice places to look, and I'm excited about the future, and so far, my other committees are not meeting right now yet. I still try to get some help to, to find some ears for the sustainability committee, but that's what I'm really want to say. Really great seeing the, the promotions of our officers, because some of these officers are just really dedicated people, and they've been in the community, and we've had some interactions that have been very positive, and I'm just glad to see that this is going on. And I think that'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I, I welcome you. Glad to have you on staff, and as everyone else has said, thanks for all the staff's work on this Aspen Avenue issue, and we know it's not completed yet, but I think we're making progress, and we're working collectively. I think that's important. Also want to give a big shout out to Phyllis and staff this past weekend. I've seen such a big crowd. If any of y'all had a chance to go out there bunny hop, and I know there weren't all young residents, but it was just packed, and what it does reinforces to me the, the need for us to have a larger space facility to provide for our citizens, and those people who call we go at home. So something we have to continue to work for. In fashion with Davis Montgomery, I want to give a big shout out to my granddaughter, Amy Caroline. She had turned four this past week. She had a birthday, and celebrate that.
Well, before you hand it over to Mark, you have not, if you're gonna follow Davis's footsteps, you didn't announce your other granddaughter being born.
Oh, I did that last week, and also my, my second granddaughter, Marion Elizabeth, although she was born in February. Blessed to have two sweet little children. So, thank you.
That you can get back.
There you go. Welcome, Jill. I'll be working with you. I'm on the downtown committee, so looking forward to that. And it sounds like you've got a lot of good experience, so welcome. Look forward to, to, to working with you. Rich, thanks to you and the staff again for all the hard work with this with Aspen Avenue. I think our, our main goal was wanting to do the right thing, and, and I appreciate you going to extra effort to, to make things work out. I know it's been a lot of, a lot of work. Tell you how much I appreciate that. And everybody has a nice Easter.
Thank you. Um, I will just say that I think the rest of the board said it very well. I want to give a special thank you to Mark for serving on my behalf, and you all know I need to have my vacation, although you met in my absence, so thank you for that. It was a wonderful time. Thanks for asking. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Dr. Stein, did you have anything for us to see me?
No.
Hi.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Just really enjoy self-torture.
Five weeks till final, through final exams, commencement, May twenty, and appreciate all you do.
In our house, we say twenty May, because that's Flallicates' birthday, and for whatever reason, she thinks she's European. She still says, her birthday, it's twenty May.
So I, I just want to say, I appreciate you coming. So when you, when I first started serving on the board, and I'd see you come, or you'd get on the Zoom, it's always to give an update, for you really to sit through this meeting. I think it says a lot about the town and the universities trying, the, the relationship. So, so thanks for doing that, because you don't have to. I mean, I know you're a resident, and you want to engage with us and learn what's happening, but thanks.
That could be. Well, if I can, if I can change, spend one more second, too, and just, since we're talking about that, since it's getting close to time for graduation and finals, Elon Community Church will be doing their yearly pet a puppy on May first, Sunday, May first, from two to four, and if you have a dog, and you want to bring them to our front lawn. No, we're sure, we're supposed to relieve stress. The, the, the goal is for students to be able, in, in, as their stress is levels rising, to have the, the, the therapy of, of being able to pet dogs. It's really, really well-received event, and that will be again, Sunday, May first, from two.
I really enjoyed that last semester, right? You do it every semester, so.
Well, we can't do it winter semester, it's too cold, but we're doing it every spring semester.
Last year.
Thinking of Dog Day.
Okay.
Yeah, that's different.
Well, Hobie will be there with his first dog of Elon.
We're loving it.
Will, will you be serving dogs again?
No, this is just cookies. We just have cookies, homemade cookies.
Dude. Yes.
I share with you that I do invite the volunteer applicants, the applicants that send in a volunteer application, I invite them to your April twenty-fifth meeting.
And maybe we'll get some more. We should have really encouraged, we still have one Ashley Woods resident remaining, so maybe to recruit some more volunteers. We have openings for our sustainability action committee, and our equality committee, we're To recruit some more volunteers. We have openings for our sustainability action committee and our equality committee. We're still kind of finessing the name. But we would love some volunteers. Okay, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
Like motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.